We want to check on both.
Are we like, do you want me for it?
Yeah. No, that's fine. I'm looking at the. Okay. And we'll see if you want to. It's you right here.
Yeah, I just, I just have some of the strict.
Okay.
It's this morning and afternoon.
Yeah.
I feel bad. I mean, I'm in town.
Next year. Well, I feel. My problem.
Just keep it there somehow. And.
Weird. Real.
It's Thursday night, right? Yeah. The city does. The eighteen. All right. Yep, it's Friday. Called the meeting to orders. Um, we'll move on to our merged mental health policy and SEL.
I am. There we go. Having a slight bit of trouble having to start up. Uh, this afternoon's presentation and the work session is based around social emotional learning. And part of it, just to go through, uh, as you'll see as we, we, uh, show you some of the information that we put together for you to present on the social emotional learning and some of the aspects of how we incorporate it into the everyday life of the students and our staff. Uh, you may recall last spring, we had a presentation by our high school counselors. It was, uh, from each of the schools, um, the traditional three high schools, Washington, New York, and Roosevelt. The department chair for the counseling department presented on the services that they provide to counseling. That at that time was titled SEL and counseling and counseling services. Uh, truly, when we look at it, at that time, we went through the numbers of the counselors that we have and the support organizations of our community and city. Um, and so when you see the term SEL, that is part of. At that time, also, they talked quite a bit about using really what is the gold standard in, in social emotional learning, which is CASL. And so many of the things that are based on CASL. Uh, CASL is the collaborative, um, academic, uh, social and emotional learning. Each one of those pieces, and a key piece about of CASL is that academic piece. Uh, there are several schools that incorporate that academic piece as a significant portion. It could be a standalone program and they have, or many of which incorporating into several areas of their school life. One part that we presented at that time was the counseling component of that. We do have with the Sioux Falls School District, over seventy school counselors. We also bring in outside, uh, agencies like Southeast Behavioral Health. And there's almost about forty counselors that come between LSS, the PATH program, uh, Southeast Behavioral Health and other counselors. That in and of itself is the counseling component of SEL, but is not SEL at all. SEL, as you'll see as we go through, uh, and show you really an overview of it because it's, there's so much to it. You can't give the whole presentation. Counseling's one part and it leaves itself in. The academics is one part and leaves itself in. And so really, when we looked at that last spring, that is one component of what we do for SEL. Today, we'll really give you a broad overview of how we weave that into so many parts of our schools as we go through. And we'll really look at, uh, and, and we've never reached that, that end game, and that you never will. Uh, you always have to continue to change and improve and look for those new areas. And so even the things you see today, that is not the be all, it's just what. We'll talk about that, what, some of our next steps that we do. So, we'll take you through the presentation. We'll take you through the presentation of information and show you where we're at on things, then talk about some of those next steps. So you at least have a pretty good overview of what SEL stands for in our district. So.
Good afternoon. Dr. Nold and Dr. Poison and I are working together um, with groups of staff across the district in this initiative, so we're gonna tag team today. So, the SEL initiatives, we're gonna see really documented best in our strategic plan through priority statements three and four, which is in priority area two, school culture and climate. Those two priority statements focus around nurturing and safe learning experiences for all students and developing strategies to enhance a culturally responsive workforce. As we show you, um, the framework we've started to put together for our district, we have woven priority statement four into the SEL framework, um, that we're gonna show you. So, that's our logic there. In this year's strategic plan of initiatives, we have these four initiatives that really all have an interface in different parts of SEL. The first, of course, is that we're gonna evaluate the current practices of the district and how that impacts social emotional well-being of our students and staff. And then to be able to establish if additional initiatives may be necessary. So we've engaged in what we would call more of a needs assessment activity this year, looking at all the components of the SEL, where we are as we look toward planning and future, where we go. We, uh, are having much activity going on around culturally responsive practices that we would say would continue, just weave in the SEL. We have been looking at systems to implement page training for all Sioux Falls School District staff. Page training is that understanding about inter, exterior biases and how that impacts teaching and learning and relationships with kids. And so we have some ideas we'll bring to you in the budget about that. And then studying the current student assistance team model to have more consistent practices, which is another group that's going on. So, what is SEL? We bring you this information from a group called CASL, which is probably a leading expert in our country on the topic of the SEL. Um, you can go about anywhere nationally to learn about SEL and you will see the frameworks coming out of CASL. So SEL is how children and adults learn to understand and manage their emotions, set goals, show empathy for others, establish positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. So, that's where we are. So we're gonna start next with Brett, who's gonna talk about some of the policy pieces of this, and then we'll come back to some.
Hi. I believe this is my first time addressing the board, so thanks for having me. So, following the NSBA conference and, um, some receipt of some, some policies from around the country, um, from some of my colleagues in similar positions, and then also looking at the Associated School Board of South Dakota model policies. I've kind of taken a look at these policies and broken out some common themes um, that we either address elsewhere in policy or through practices. So I just wanna talk through those quickly, and if you have questions, I'll, if you can, if you can address them then too. Um, the first place, um, that we address mental health in our policies is in section A, which is sets forth the educational philosophy and school district vision, mission, and views. Policy AD, we seek to create a learning environment, uh, provided for students to acquire knowledge and skills to enhance their own physical and mental health, enabling them to accept themselves and others, the important, in themselves and others, the importance of feelings, dignity, and self-worth. So, so that sets forth the, uh, the vision or the mission of the district. But, that policy statement in and of itself is kind of a passive way of addressing mental health. So then we wanna look at, what are the procedures and, and how do we carry out these policies? Take a more active role. We look into the procedures and curriculum of the district. And so these discussions, um, are built into the strategic plan, um, related practices in curriculum, then also into some of the already existing practices of the district such as compliance with regulatory requirements in IDEA in section five oh four. Um, based on the guidance, and those regulatory frameworks were to construe disability broadly to include mental health disorders. And so, as we think about the policies, um, and we have policy review, we wanna keep mental health in focus and where, where necessary, tweak those policies and procedures to address issues of mental health. Um, another common theme I saw in a lot of these policies were the community partnerships that school districts have. And I think in Sioux Falls, we're lucky to have a wealth of those resources available. While you could put it in with policy, I think there's kind of an ever-changing landscape of who those community partners are. And just so long we keep in mind that those partnerships are moving forward. Another common theme I saw was around suicide prevention, intervention, and post intervention. So I just wanna kind of make those connections, um, as to what I saw in policy and where I see it taking place in the district current procedures. So staff training, um, you're gonna see, um, that taking place in teacher prep programs now as a requirement for them to qualify for certification, and then also the new state requirement that they have suicide prevention training on initial receipt of certificate as well as renewals. Um, and student training, you're gonna see it in the curriculum, from the counselors to the health classes, and you'll hear more about that than the rest of the people do. Um, crisis intervention, another common theme as to how school district staff address issues either within the school or as school administrators and staff learn of issues of mental health and how they deal with students. So, the, the first line that would be, uh, the CBI training received by district staff members to address immediate concerns regarding, um, as mental health issues take place. We, we build it into the discipline policy, um, issues where, um, student drug use or threatening behavior is, is a part of that. We, we use our partnership with Southeastern to have a kind of a dependency screening or a risk assessment done. And those are gonna have recommendations for what the student can do moving forward. And one of the common things I saw as far as, um, those community partnerships was wraparound services. We're seeing those in a lot of policies, and so that's what Southeastern can, can help provide at those times when family members and other people in the student's lives are really, they need to be involved in that process as well. So they can all prepare people from this way. Um, and then, the, the post intervention, um, the student, the student assistance team takes the responsibility here where I've seen in a lot of policies, how they address, how students, how, how they incorporate the student back into the school setting following, you know, perhaps a mental health stay or, you know, other, other sort of crisis that the, the student experiences. And so that student assistance team, where necessary, would also, um, have a report to the five oh four team or the IEP team, you know, necessarily. And that's why it's important to keep that regular code in your, in mind. We have, we have a process set up for that.
Good afternoon. Um, I have the honor of doing the next section. So CASL, as we talked to about earlier, is really, uh, the foundation across the nation of setting the standard for social emotional learning. And this is what CASL stands for, and I thought it was important for us just to, um, bring this forward so you understand their background just a little bit more and for anybody that's listening. But it's, CASL believes that social emotional learning is important for all students. So we understand their diversity, their cultures, their backgrounds, our page training that we do with all our staff really helps set that standard also, um, so levels of playing ground for our staff. It's a systematic improvement. It's not an intervention. And so we need to weave it into all parts of the day. It's not a standalone class. It's, it's how we do business. It's how I help, um, a student with self-regulation skills. I help a student with, uh, that is having a hard time because somebody doesn't wanna be their friend or they come to school and they're upset about something that happened at home or social media crisis. And so that's, it's really about how we as adults care for those students all day long in any class or in the hallway. And then, uh, we uplift students' voice. So we promote that. They, they have voice, they have agency, they are leaders in our building, and we really do listen to them. And so how do we, as we develop curriculum, how do we embed that throughout the curriculum to help support students? And then we wanna make sure we strengthen the adult SEL practices, and so our staff, um, throughout the district at every level, how do we help promote that for equity for them and then also help support their skills and, um, self-care for themselves also. And then we must engage students, families, community partners in this social emotional development, and we'll show you, um, we collected the information on all those different categories and we'll get into that. So we started with the CASL framework, and in the center there is the CASL wheel. And you can see that outer ring is home and communities. Then we have schools and classrooms. And so we know that it takes all of us to educate the students and our youth in the community. And within that, we have self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness, and relationship skills. So on the left, we know as a district and a school, if we have, we build strong foundational skills, strengthen the adult SEL in our buildings, promote SEL for students, and practice this continual improvement, we will get the student outcomes on the right side. And on the right side, we start with the long-term goals of we'll have better graduation rates. Kids will be ready, um, whether it's college or career readiness. They'll have good relationships, mental health, reduce crime, engage citizens. That's our goal. The intermediate wins are social behaviors and relationships, academic success, fewer conduct problems, less emotional distress, and less drug use. And our short wins, because we always wanna have those short wins, is improved attitudes about themselves and others and perceived classroom climate. And so that climate's good. I feel good about what I'm doing as a student, um, and my tasks are developed. So that's our goal. So as we look at how we develop social emotional in the Sioux Falls School District, is how are we gonna get those outcomes on the right, um, and looking at what we already have in place and as we move forward. So, we started with, um, we, it was the Deb, Jamie, and Teresa Roadshow, and we went around to all these different groups and collected information and gathered input. We talked to the social workers, the counselors, principal representatives, curriculum services, supervisors, and coordinators. The health committee started this year, um, with their steering committee really looking at that health curriculum. So it was a perfect opportunity to meet with them. And then we met with the curriculum council, and that brings in community members, university representatives, teachers, parents, and, um, all of, at all levels. And so, we collected information and we developed our SEL wheel. So this is the Sioux Falls District's information on what do we do to address social emotional learning in Sioux Falls. And we have a left, we call this our pinwheel, and we adapted it from CASL's. And we have explicit SEL instruction. We have, uh, can I read that red one from there? It's SEL Integrated Academic Instruction, Youth Voice and Engagement, because we talked about how important that is. Supportive School Climate and Cultures, Focus on Adult SEL, because we can't forget about the adults in the building. Um, supportive discipline, and Brett touched on that. A continuum of integrated supports, authentic family partnerships. So there again, there's that ring on there. It's schools, classrooms, homes, community, and then aligned community partnerships, systems for continuous improvement, and we added safety because safety is a, a big part of that. So within this wheel, if, they're all hot links. And so if you click on a hot link, so under explicit instruction, it gives the definition of explicit instruction. And then we collected as a district, what do we do to support the students in this area? The staff, what district resources do we have, and then who are our community partners? And so we're gonna show you just a couple of those, um, knowing that this is an ongoing process, but this is, this gave us a place to start. So we're gonna look at Focus on Adult SEL and Align Community Partnerships. And I have to jump out of this. So Focus on Adult Development, so staff have regular opportunities to cultivate social, emotional, cultural competency. And this is where we put, um, culturally responsive and social emotional learning together and building trust relationships and maintaining a strong community. So under stat, Student Supports, um, we have. Um, so that's, and remember, this is adult SEL. So under Student Supports, we have Project Warm-Up, Avera Wellness, Autism Team Training, Backpack Program. Staff Supports, there's our page training, the Trauma Informed Online Academy. And that's been a big push this year in many buildings, um, where they're, they work through online courses together as a staff and they're seeing, really building that empathy for students and understanding, but it also helps them to develop their own social emotional, that self-awareness for them. Book studies, NAMI, ACES, and you can read that list that goes on for staff supports. And some are very individualized. Friday forums in service, you know, even staff meals for conferences. That's important for that, they feel that they're appreciated. Um, sunshine, social, social groups, building data retreats to really look at that information, student assistance teams and PLCs that, um, personal learning, community, communities. And then here's our district resources. They have data retreat, retreats in service, collaboration, community supporting events, district-wide IEP help sessions and behavior teams. It continues. And there's our community partnerships under this. And so, when we look at this and we look at all those eleven spines of the pinwheel, um, part of it is that ongoing evaluation of it. And that was the adult. And then if we skip over to Align Community Partnerships, because our community is so supportive and when we start to look at all those relationships out there, um, this is really making sure we have the Common Language and Strategies, SEL, and CRP, culturally responsive practices, and how do they work together on that. So here's our Student Supports. Pathways, LSS, BOA, Backpack, Southeast Behavioral Health, Harmony, Help Line, Sioux Falls Cares. We continue to scroll down. Girls on the Run, and that was one of the, that is mentioned under CASL as one of the SEL. Junior Achievement, Avera Academy, LSS Police Department, Junior Achievement, we have them listed twice. Teammates, um, E Clinics, Wellness Committee, you know, all our university partners, um, Avera Behavioral Health. I think, continue to go, and then let's Challenge Day, Dental Mobile. Let's go to the next. Staff Supports, there's some staff supports there and district resources. And then we get down into community partnerships, and many of these look the same as the student because they do. Night of Hope and Caring, Fifty Two Mentoring, Private and Parent Donations, Police Department. Continue to. So that's our, our efforts on moving forward, on collecting information on each of those eleven pinwheels. And so, looking at, again, what are we currently doing? And where are we collecting information? Our strategic plan, we are collecting information along with that on graduation rates. And two meetings ago, you saw this information and the metrics on that, graduation rates, attendance rates. Students are feeling supported at, at, safe at school. They, they feel, staff feels safe at school, behavior reports. Student adults have high expectations and parents reporting, teachers hold their students for high expectations. Those are through our climate survey and that reevaluation, and we'll do that survey again that, um, has been created by the district to gather that metric and we, we, we give you that information. And as I mentioned earlier, the health committee started their steer, uh, we started with our steering committee last, this fall, two thousand nineteen, and really looking at, um, how we redefine that K-12 health curriculum. And they wrote this vision and mission statement, and we were sitting in there just two weeks ago. And we said, this is a perfect alignment with what we're doing. So the health education encompasses the physical, mental, and emotional and social well-being. It's an essential component of the district's curriculum. There again, we embed it in the curriculum. And the health curriculum focuses on empowering students to function optimally and as global citizens and prepares them for the demands of a changing world. And so, next year, that committee will start to really look at that curriculum for K-12 and that alignment, which focuses in on our next steps of what we're gonna continue to do within the Sioux Falls School District.
So a lot of the information you saw there is really a overview of, of all the different veins that come together to support the SEL within the school district. There is not one set curriculum. Uh, it's really embedded in all those things. And many of the school districts that we have looked at model in that same way. It's not a set curriculum utilized or it's not district counseling program. It's really all those things we do in support. A couple of the sessions even went to it, and the last professional development was even what they do in the classroom with the engagement aspect and the teaming of the students. Because the more those students can work together at a younger age, the more they become more accepting and knowledgeable of each other's backgrounds. So, some of the things that were still going on and, and moving forward, but student assistance team. That review has started here this spring, uh, to go through to make sure that we have very similar practices, at least the core practices that are elementary, that they're gonna be similar and how they, they work on the student assistance team. The middle schools, similarities there, and then in high school, so we make sure that we address, uh, the student needs. Our counselor curriculum review, um, in the high school, a lot of that is the career, uh, assessments and then the career advancement to look into the careers that the students may be interested in. That's combined into our English course, with courses, and they utilize that time to be able to go in and do that, that, uh, career inventories. The elementary and middle school, with the elementary, it's much more so than going into the classrooms and working with the students, and then in middle school and the pro times. We also have, uh, the wheel that you had seen there that we're utilizing to go through to now see where do we have gaps? Where are there areas that we still need to create better programming? Or bring in other entities within our community to be able to support the students within the social emotional. So, really, it's helped us kind of look at an overall, overall view of the school district of what do we currently have? Where do we possibly have some gaps to continue on the review of some of these areas? We continually update that and then build the program and can deal with them in those gaps. Uh, this last part of it, it was probably, and you can read that statement, I will not, but the key piece of it i- is it's absolutely not just a twenty-minute session that we would do each and every day. Um, I started out talking about the counselors. And we do and we look at just our school counselors, seventy school counselors, uh, ten social workers, um, ten success coordinators, the forty counselors that come in from Southeast Behavioral Health and LSS PATH. That really is not a standalone SEL program. It's interwoven in every one of those spokes that come out because they have an active role in each part of that, whether it's with the adults, whether it's with our community, whether it's with just our student or the academics. Um, so, if you look at it in and of that, counselors are one piece, but they're all combined together to help the students throughout the entire day. And that's truly what we tried to do with that wheel is, is look at where are all the components that we have and how do we bring that together as one and then start to look. And then start to look at the gaps. Questions that you have or information that we could go back over or discuss with you?
Thank you for this report. I know it's been an issue we've all, as a board, especially after attending an SBA, wondered exactly what we're doing as a district in a deep dive. So we appreciated all the information provided. I had two questions. First, with the boundaries changing in middle school and high school that we're discussing, how, what is the game plan for our district to make sure that since students are moving and they're then going to encounter new staff? That they are trained appropriately for maybe new behaviors, cultural diversity in that new building for them?
And part of that we have discussed as we begin to go through, because so many of the staff that we're going to have are going to be current staff within the district. And how do we, and Dr. Myers talked on that a couple of different times or brushed on that, that are we going to have that, the new staff selected that are going to that building? Many of which will be in our district, or some will be new hires, just like it is at all schools right now. But it is not that our district will be adding 1,000 new middle school students. So it'll be coming from the other middle schools or 1,800 new high school students. So they're coming from other schools. So many of our staff will be trained. Part of that we will bring forward in the budget, at least on staffing, is the PAGE training. And how do we help and interact with the students that we work with on a daily basis? Many of those things also in hiring the principal and activities director is to start to set some of that culture up for that building while we need events. And that'll be done both at the middle school level and the high school level. So we do have that in place and to allow them, especially when they start to head into that hiring process, to begin to look with the department chairs that will be hired for that next year. And how do they set up what are going to be the protocols and what are going to be the things that they utilize for the culture? Hiring of the activities, that's going to be a critical piece of it as they go through and determine those parts. Because even as we see later on, we want to make sure we answer some of those questions. That the activities will be there and will be ever-present. Their counselors will be there. All those programs that you currently receive services for, your current school will be found at the two new schools that they would move into.
I could add that typically in the past, as we've opened new buildings or had significant changes in school boundaries, as leadership team, we've usually laid out categories that we need to make sure get addressed in that year before. Everything from having enough textbooks to how do we set up opportunities for kids to begin to meet and interact to the things Dr. Noel just talked about. So I would anticipate, once we have boundaries set, we as a leadership team, when we don't lay out.
With existing buildings as well, yeah.
For everybody, that, that significant impact of how we lay that out and what are all the things we have to figure out, from books to all those pieces. So typically, we've laid that out in some kind of a written fashion. We've said, you're in charge of this part, you're in charge of this part. Give this to these people, and it's all been laid out at times.
Boundaries and leadership, building leadership probably, right?
Yeah, and that's what Dr. Noel does refer into, that's a key first step. Get your leaders in place and then their part of this process of laying out all the requirements.
Question I had about the pinwheel. That said that was an interactive.
It is.
So is it on our website? Is it a resource for our teachers, community, parents?
It is not on there yet, no. You were the first to be able to see it outside of the.
It's a resource for us.
And it is definitely something that are, you know, we have been working through. Each one of those groups that we had listed, they were accessing, they were putting the information in there. And then we'll go back to them to see where do we have some of those gaps. Many of the things you saw on there were district-wide. So the two examples of that pinwheel, they're really district-wide things we do. There's so many buildings that do some more specific. This one?
What measurements, what measurements are used for student needs? Are we mentioning?
So if we look back to, yep. So for student outcomes, of course, we're looking at all of our metrics that we use within the district, if you're talking academic. So, you know, we use our MAP data, we use South Dakota assessments. We use our district semester tests. We use teachers' youth formative, that's academic. But these are, right now, that, the measurements and the metrics that we use that are included in social, emotional learning. So our graduation rates, our attendance, and then behavior reports, the buildings look at those. And then if you look at these four right here, students reporting, they feel safe. Staff reporting, they feel safe. And students have adults with high expectations and parents reporting, teachers hold their students to high expectations. Those are in our climate survey. And we'll continue with those. And we've expanded those questions as we deploy that survey this spring to add, to gather additional information. And so that's how we're getting, we will survey students, staff, and families. We, we have done that in the past with these four questions on our climate survey. But we've expanded that climate survey and we'll still ask the same groups as we have. Yep. And those were.
That strategic one, Doug Morrison, you gave that for the.
Yes, 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 yep. No, that's good, it is. Well, and if, and we talked about putting the percentages up here, but we had just done that a couple of weeks ago. And so we thought, well, we know we can still access that, because that reports out. So yes, it is good to look at that.
And it's a good question there, because we did utilize the Gallup poll for numerous years. Now we're taking questions that we have more specifically in our district and incorporating those questions into our climate survey that we'll send out. So our climate survey will be slightly longer than it has been before, because we'll put it in the one survey. And it'll be taken by the students, by staff, and by. A little more specific than that. It is, yep. And, and, yep, absolutely. And we just created our own, went through a multitude of questions. Narrowed it down to ones that really benefited our school district and still helped us to answer any of the strategic plan questions.
How many questions?
Doug Morrison has taken the lead on that part. How many, I just went through and took that survey. How many questions were on the survey for the student part outside of CTE by 10?
Less than 20?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's, I like the Gallup, it's 12 questions.
The nice thing about rewriting the survey. Yeah, the nice thing about rewriting the survey is, like Doug said, it branches off. So we get specific, but we can also drill down to staff groups and students, how they respond to give us better feedback, so we have actionable items. Because with the Gallup, we couldn't drill down that far. And we didn't, you know, you might get a response, but we don't know any other details. And how do we change it if we don't have that information?
Just so we get more information, but not really enough. Yep, correct. And, and even when you reference that, seniors, so that they don't have multiple other surveys to take. There's incorporated, incorporated into that, having the senior survey in there as well. So they click that they're a senior, they'll have a couple more questions. If they click that they're in high school, elementary, they'll have by far the fewest. They may only have eight, besides, I'm in elementary, what elementary school? And there's about eight questions. The high school have a few more because CTE. Middle school has a few CTE as well, and we have to utilize that because of the purpose and the funding there. So we tried to incorporate a few of those different ones into one and still keep it.
I was going to say, I remember taking this, I think it's the survey that we're talking about in the past. And I always thought, you know, I've always had kind of kids in two different schools. And it never really gave me the opportunity to differentiate between how I felt about one group versus another. And so I'm glad to hear that you have added or changed that and are able to differentiate that for this time around. And then can you just remind me, who is on our student assistance teams? And when are they activated per se?
Every school, every single school has a student assistance team. Generally speaking, if there's a success coordinator, they will be on it. Administration will be on there, counselor will be on there. There could be some other support staff that may be as well. And then a lot of times we'll have the classroom teachers, special education. So a lot of that will depend, in the high school one, every one of those is represented at each of the meetings. In the elementary, I believe it's the same.
In the elementary, they, exactly, counselor, admin, teachers, and a variety of levels. Social worker possibly. Sometimes they'll invite the parents in. And so every structure looks different. Some have a K-2 SAT team and some have a 3-5. Just that way they can address those needs more specifically.
And so is that similar to, let's say, that we have, obviously, we're talking about mental health issues. So we may have a student who's dealing with something, and we bring in that team to directly help that student. Is that the same group of people who, let's say, we, there's a tragic car accident or something, and a student is lost? Is it, it's a different team that we utilize to support for that?
Yep, and Patty Lake Torbert, the head of our student support services, she coordinates the efforts of emergency response team. So that team would come in with any type of a tragic event. And that is going to be predominantly built with the counselors. And that group that would come in. Now, depending on what the emergency response is, it could be more significant. But the mass majority of it would be a group of counselors that come into the building and help and assist within that building. The student assistance team is something that would meet at the school on a regular basis. Teachers, could be parents, administration. They'd make recommendations to the team to review this individual. And it could be that there may be a concern for a need of a 504, special education services, or any other type of service. It could be just that they're falling behind on some academics, changes in class schedules. So they, they really have a gamut, a whole list of things that they can utilize to review. That's why I want to make sure, as we go through and do the study on that, that we look at, that there's consistency of a base of things that they need to review at every school, so that's not missed. And then there's other things they may add in and need to their school.
And the students, student assistance team can be either recommended by the school to the student? Or it can also come the other direction, where a parent could just come in and say, I'm feeling like we need help, is that true?
Yep, absolutely. And now if it's a parent asking for some of those helps and services because of needs they have at home, it may be a social worker that helps and benefits them. If it needs to connect into resources in the community. If it's really dealing with that school and academic outcomes or things at the school, the student assistance team.
What I love is that it's for all students, not just who we might think of at risk, because we truly need to take a look at all, at all of those students and staff to make sure that we are providing the support and plan for everybody. As we all have been learned through trauma-informed learning and so forth. But it's, it's just, we have to have the skill sets to do this.
So it is. And closing on that, it truly is, there is no one quote. And it has to be things that we incorporate, because every single piece, some student may need the counseling services. Some students may need the outside counseling services. Some may need just that general interaction in the classroom to feel part of a group of others and begin to get to know each other. And part of that is how we do that teamwork within the classrooms. Or some may need all of it. So there is not one prescribed outcome for each student or faculty for each student to be able to reach that. It really has to be a whole gamut. And that's where we started on that, to start to see where we're missing some of those pieces. Some key pieces would be those studies, but then look at other small things, because it could be so unique for some students.
I, I agree with Kate. It'd be great to have that wheel on our website, just even for information to our students and parents and staff. This is what's available and make them, they're able to reach out. Any other questions before I open the public input? Mary? Thank you. We'll move on, no public input on that. Move to board committee reports. Carly, would you like to start?
I wrote it down, I forgot it. So I'll start with insurance. And we met last week and we went and we were looking at next year's kind of projected rates and changes. And so everyone got a document to take back with them to speak with their appropriate groups. Overall, looking at about a 2% overall increase for next year. I'm trying to, from memory, if I, we are below our amount that we have spent. And so we're looking at potential for either a premium holiday or a partial premium holiday. We're going to reassess that in March, when we get a little bit further into the year and feel safer in doing so. I think 80, just random numbers, like 81% of all of our claims. We have about 21 million in claims, and about 81% is medical and 19% is pharmacy types of things. So interesting. And other specific things. We talked a lot about the plans for next year and that kind of feedback. And then what we were looking at going forward, we've done a really nice job of kind of keeping those rates level and keeping our contributions from employees lower. And the district has been keeping in a lot of that. So how can we maintain that, but also make sure that we're minimizing some of our risks? So good conversations and look forward to more next year. Calendar, we had a really good conversation this last meeting. We unanimously, everyone that was there agreed on the calendar, so that was monumental. And, and Kate, you want to talk about some of your suggestions that you brought up that are being tossed around?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think some of the, we might see some changes to next year's calendar yet, so minimal. So if your parents don't get worried, they already made plans for next year, parents or teachers. We did discuss the change, possible change in, you recall, elementary has a early dismissal and middle school has a late start on some in-service things. So we're talking about having those both be early dismissal. So that even though they'll, they'll still be staggered, they won't dismiss at the same time. But they'll be, they'll be staggered with us, just as we normally do during the day. But at least those younger kids won't be necessarily without moving to a new school.
And I think we get feedback too from parents about the challenge of dropping a middle schooler off at 11 o'clock. You know, when they're already at work. And so if we can try to maintain some of those normal start times, and then they can make the adjustments on the backend too. So it's a great idea that Kate brought up, and Jamie was able to do some research and is still kind of finalizing a few things, but.
Works out very well, and it actually saves the district.
Yeah, so.
Welcome, Todd. So I'm not sure when we'll see the, you know, and that was my purpose, right? When I asked the question, when will we see, will we see these changes for next year yet? Or are we going to wait until later in the spring, when possibly we are beyond the need?
We'll bring forward on April 27.
So as we approve the next calendar, we will make changes to the, sorry. We'll make changes to the 2021 calendar when we adopt the 2122.
There'll be two separate proposals.
Sure, okay. So the end of April. And then all that you talked about.
Early childhood, Head Start, looking at the enrollment numbers to be completely full. There is a waiting list of approximately 180 students, mind three and four-year-olds. The monthly attendance, attendance looks excellent. It sits at right around 94% for both morning and kindergarten. And so they're just off to, you know, continue to be moving in a positive trajectory. Covered Insurance Committee, Education Foundation. We had a meeting yesterday. But they consistently continue to move in a positive trend. Last month, they raised about $50,000. There was a conversation with Dr. Maher, looking at the long-term plan for the foundation. The members there felt really. The members there felt really heard and affirmed overall. The action step with that is Brent and Deanne are working with Allison and looking at donor recognition, donor gift acceptance policy and just basically partnerships and overall growth. One thing to keep in mind is the intent of the foundation is not to stifle fundraising of the booster clubs or PTA and PTO. It's just a matter of those that are coming in to be able to streamline to the extent possible so that donor recognition is maintained as well as gift acceptance policy. And really a go-to organization as they continue to grow and develop and evolve. So they keep making some really big headways there. They're also looking at endowment growth opportunities. And the importance of that is then, as time goes on, they will be able to get more off of the endowment as it continues to grow. Because you just cannot rely on what donors may be able to give off into the future. So it's looking at for good forever and really a long-term investment for that organization. They're also looking at some new committee ideas, primarily as a way to get others involved. They're looking at two new committees. And that may also be a way to feed the overall growth and up the board as, as terms, as terms come up. That's what I have. The only other half meets next month, so we only, other committees policy we met yesterday. We're reviewing five policies. One of them being our grading and recovering system policy. We actually are gonna take the, take that back after some discussion yesterday to the middle school and high school principal groups for one more look before we bring that back. But that will be a first reading when that comes back, but we won't see it this Monday. So then a second meeting or, what do you think, Jamie? We'll see it the second meeting or perhaps the first meeting in April?
For the policy.
Okay, yeah, okay. So then we'll see four policies Monday that are reviewed, revised, very minimal changes.
Let's see, budget, we meet next week. Have a little more information. Housing, now we have a meeting. Sports Authority, Summit League is coming next week. And that should be a big weekend. And then the sports authority has put NCAA bids out and we've not received favorable responses because of Howard Wood lacking some, like a warm-up area. I believe it was javelin. And so, yeah, for, I'm sorry, NCAA track. And it came to, I'm also on the Howard Wood Dakota Relays Board. And that board is looking at making improvements to Howard Wood to benefit the Dakota Relays and coordinate with us a little bit so that it would help get future NCAA bids for track and field. Jeff Kreider's on that and then both Mark and Casey Mahler. So I think we're inching towards an agreement where maybe we can get some things done to Howard Wood that would help us and also help the community with some, some bigger. That's all.
Thank you, Todd. So do you have, bring up four more things? I feel like I do really remiss if I didn't pick this and it is important. This concerns the education foundation, two things. The first one is that the education foundation to know that they do restrict funds that people aren't interested in giving beyond teacher grants. They are not just in the business of teacher grants, giving opportunities go beyond that most definitely. And then number two, there's some dates coming up. We have the Teacher Year Reception, March ninth, for those who haven't got the calendar. They're having a fundraiser at the Barrel House on April twenty-seventh. August sixth is their breakfast at Minnehaw Country Club. And then November fifth, they have the Public Schools Proud, the student showcase, which will be at the Senior Bookworm this year.
When is that going to be?
November fifth. And August sixth is the breakfast.
When is that going to be happening?
At Minnehaw Country Club. And then the twenty-seventh is at the Barrel House, all day. So thank you.
No, thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind the public that our first community input meeting on the boundaries will be March twelfth at Memorial Middle School at five thirty PM. You do not have to be a parent or a student or a staff member or community member of the memorial area. It's open to anyone. So if the future dates after that don't work for you, please come to the memorial, come to all of them. If they all work for you, they're open to anyone. So I know the April ninth one is, gets closer to when we're, you know, gonna be starting our work session and so forth. So I want people to know they can come to any, any or all of the input sessions. They don't have to be of that community to go then. As far as my committee reports, the chamber, our meeting, there was a discussion on Lifescape. Jeff Watkins came and presented that. And also a big news that you might have read in the paper, that the CVB now is leaving the chamber and gonna be their own nonprofit entity. Terry Schmidt will be, it will be called Visit Sioux Falls. There's items from that. Todd touched on budget as a follow-up as well. Remember, we're gonna have two work sessions regarding budget and at two different times to allow community members, if they wanna come listen or hear, they can be. And we moved them up in the process so that if they have more questions and so forth, they have more opportunities to do that. And I know Todd speaks a bit, Todd was very supportive and helpful in that. SE, the Sioux Empire Leadership Council. I've discussed, you know, the triage project is obviously moving forward. So that's kind of moving out of our real house. They now have their own board. So they're, we're taking on a new issue and it's making sure that as a community we have the proper diversity group for people to feel comfortable in. And it's not one where, there already is a commission for, a human rights commission if they have complaints. This is more to involve more community members so that we're making sure that people who have the issues are being at the table and able to present those and how do we address those? So that's the next topic that's being discussed at Sioux Empire Leadership Council. Still very easy, early in that stages of what that dynamic will look like. And then they will once, then become their own acting. But they won't have legal authority to do anything. It's more to provide awareness and as a resource for people. And that is it? Do I have anything else for the good of? Thank you. It's Matt, do you have a motion to the chair?
Double second.
Motion second, all those in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
We'll say a sign. Your turn.
Oh, yeah.